Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this work-study session of Independent School District 624. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcan?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Chapman absent. Ellison here. Mullin?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
All right, thank you very much. We will get into our first discussion item, which is B1, the 2022-23 Secondary Course Proposals. Dr. Gillespie, is this you or Ms. Babish?
Well, it's us together.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair Mullin, members of the board, student representatives, Dr. Kazmercek. I'm here this season for new course proposals, and I do have some special guests tonight. Our educators will also be joining us to talk about their rationale for the new course proposal. So excited to have them be able to share the new opportunities that we're bringing to you tonight. So as part of our work for new course proposals, it's really grounded in our World's Best Workforce School of All Students College and Career Ready by Graduation. Every, we reference the school when we look at new course proposals. We also look that aligns with the AICL standards for college and career readiness. We take into consideration perspectives from industry partners, post-secondary institutions, staff and students, and we also look for a strategic plan for guidance. This is also a great opportunity for us to look at our equity decision-making protocol and to see where we're able to eliminate barriers to rigorous coursework for all of our students. So tonight. So tonight I have new course proposals. One other thing that we look at is we look at student interest and enrollment trends. Many of the teachers survey students to see what interests they have in new course proposals. And then we also look at the capacity of implementing new courses and how implications for staffing, scheduling, and facilities also play out when we look at new course proposals. Tonight I have three types of proposals that I'm going to bring forward to you: new courses, name changes, and term changes. I will start with the course name changes. And the first course we have is Biznology from the Business and Marketing Department. And as you may recall, this has been a new course a few years ago. And this course provides opportunities for students to learn and experience the integration of business and technology. Students are exposed to a number of professional technology platforms, including but not limited to Microsoft Office, Google Suite, and online applications and resources. So we wanted to make sure that the course name reflected the course content. Thus, the new course name change would be Business Applications, and that would be for grades nine through 12. It is a semester course. The second name change is to our sixth-grade Music Enrichment course. And this course focuses on studying the elements of music. And these elements will be applied in analyzing music composers, cultural backgrounds. This course also includes the studies of various musical styles and music history. And we wanted to ensure that the course reflected, the course name reflected the course content, thus general music, because it really is an overview of music instead of an enrichment piece, which many times families think that it's maybe in addition to or above and beyond. And so thus the name changed to general music. And that is a sixth-grade course every other day for the full year. The next two courses are really to align with our post-secondary partners for colleges and the new school programming. So we're proposing to change Writing Studio to University Writing 1301 to match the University of Minnesota's course title. And then the second course, Curriculum Reading and Thinking, Reading 1000, to Reading 1000, Reading Across the Curriculum, which is, would be in alignment with our college and the high school course with Century College. Thus, the name changes for those. Now, I would like to invite up our Automotive and Career Pathways educator, Derek Duscher, and he's going to talk through the rationale for a name change and term change in his area.
Excuse me, Ms. Babish, as we're doing that transition, I just want to make sure with any of the name changes, if there's any questions that we could ask.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions regarding the name changes? Ms. Floyd?
Did those name changes already happen at the universities?
Yes.
Others?
I just have a question. So I'm in a class called College Writing.
Yes.
And then there's also going to be a class called University Writing. So will students have to ask the difference between the two classes? Because when it says Writing Studio and then that this is a CIS class while College Writing isn't, is that going to cause confusion?
Yeah, that, I think that's a great question, that we're going to want to make sure that we differentiate so kids know between if it's a college in the high school or college in the schools course or not. So I think that's a great clarifying point that I can bring back to the teachers and administration. Thank you.
Is yours currently a CIS class?
No.
So it's just a high school?
It's just a high school class, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Okay.
Great, thank you. Derek, do you want to introduce yourself?
Hey, everyone. I am Derek Duscher. I'm Automotive and Transportation Career Pathway instructor. This is my third year with White Bear Lake. And before I came here, I worked out in automotive industry for eight years, where I was a Mini Cooper specialist and a Ford specialist, too. A couple of the changes that I have proposed today, the first one you see up on the screen, is changing the name of Motorsports to Powersports. The rationale for this is it matches our local industry and the local colleges better. I work with a lot of people across the state in our local industry, and this was a big suggestion by them because that's what Alexandria Tech, Raynard, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on the other local schools. But a lot of the local colleges that you could go to in our state for this type of curriculum, which would be like ATBs, dirt bikes and that, call it Powersports instead of Motorsports. So it's better aligned with that. And then the rationale for changing it from a year-long course to a half-year course is the better align with our local industry. I really believe that Career Pathway classes should really represent our local industry. If you look up and down 61, we have a lot of automotive. We have some Powersports, but we have mostly automotive. So the rationale would be, as we look to that new school building with a lot of great new opportunities, how can we use that building best to represent our local industry? And that would be focusing a lot on automotive and still offer Powersports because our students are really intrigued by it. A lot of our students go, you know, four-wheeling, hunting, and snowmobiling on the weekend. So this is a great class to teach them about that. But it helps us better align with our industry. And then also, like I mentioned, it'll help us start getting prepared for that new high school. Our new high school will allow us a lot of great opportunities. And how can we utilize the space for automotive and transportation education the best? And I think that's by changing this from a year to half, we can start offering more options for automotive. And the nice thing is automotive opens a lot of doors for students. You know, we're not focusing on Powersports or Motorsports, whatever name you want to use right now as much. But with automotive, it transfers over to that area. You know, automotive transfers electrical, plumbing, science, engineering. There's a lot of doors that we can open up through automotive. So if a student chooses to go into Powersports after high school, they will have a great foundation that they still can do that with. Any questions for me on that one?
Questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what kind of additional classes do you, do you see, once we open up the new high school, since this would be moving to a semester, what would be kind of the additional class pathways that you see opening up?
With switching this to a half-course, it would allow for more spaces for the existing automotive classes. I have a lot of ideas. We, I met with my industry board. I have over 20 local industry partners that meet with us twice a year. The president last year met with myself, Ms. Babish, Ms. Moore, Mr. Bosch. And then our advisory council president, and we discussed that about how can we use that. And one of the ideals, you know, we first pitched was can we make like a hybrid class and get more kids out to industry? Can we get those exposure opportunities so we build on what they already have, so we're getting them ready for industry? So allow more areas for that. With the new school building, we're going to have a lot more opportunities in the automotive area because of how it's going to be set up, that we can do different tasks that we can't right now, that will open up if we have, you know, higher-end of class, you know, maybe for possibly community work, working more with the end, our local community partners, a lot of different opportunities like that.
What about opportunities with, I don't know if the University of Minnesota does it, but I know of a couple universities that are, that are south that have, you have teens build cars and that kind of thing. Do we see any kind of relationship with the schools to get something like that going?
I haven't thought of that. I've been wondering if you were talking like the super mileage car possibly, where they go to, that's a possibility. Sometimes that's a, a club sometimes. Because there's certain rules, it's kind of like the robotics team where it can't like be a class. I think that has to be a club. I'm not sure exactly on all the standards for that, but that could be a possibility in the future.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions?
I just have.
Dr. Arcan?
You know, being here and watching you set this group up of your industry partners and watching you work. Number one, we're fortunate to have you because you're bringing in that industry experience that when you speak with our students, you can tell them this is what happens. But number two, you're developing the relationship piece to meet the needs of our community and working with them. And so, you know, the things you're bringing forward, I realize the work and the hours you put in and work with the members of our community, especially in the automotive field, and how this is meeting the needs because we know that the auto technician and those areas in the auto area are a growing need across the state. So I thank you for that. The other thing we have to remember is these type of courses now we support that, but they support some of the mathematics that we have and some of the physics that we have and some even the chemistry that we have. So support some of the standards in there and the students can learn that contextually as you're doing this. So you're offering a lot to our students. And I look forward to see what you and your advisory board comes up with in the future because you're giving our students an opportunity to find their niche in the world and actually support themselves. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Arcan. Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Derek.
Thank you.
Okay, so one of the things that I wanted to bring attention is to give an update on the course sequencing for middle school science. So you may not be aware, but Minnesota Department of Education has postponed all implementation of new standards, which include the science standards. And so earlier this fall, in August, I met with our sixth-grade science team and really felt like they needed another year for learning the standards and learning the new curriculum that we've adopted, which is Amplify Science. And so we have made the decision to postpone the new implementation of the standards starting in sixth grade until the following year. And so I just wanted to bring that to the board. And we're really going to focus on professional learning this year. We're able to take our professional learning PD days that we just had last Wednesday and next Tuesday. And then we have two other dates where the sixth-grade teachers will be able to work together and to work with Amplify Science representatives to really learn more about the new standards and the new instructional materials and resources that will be available to them starting next year with the sixth-grade class. So I'll pause if there's any questions.
Questions regarding science? Okay, thank you very much.
And so now I would like to invite two of our educators up, Tyler McCormick and David Nathanson. Maybe we'll stay, stay in the crowd. And we'd like to talk about an eighth-grade American Sign Language new course proposal. So Tyler, do you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Sure. Well, hello. My name's Tyler McCormick. I teach American Sign Language in Avid at North Campus. I've been there for about 10 years, in the district for 11. Was at South Campus for a year, then moved over to North. And I'm also practicing sign language interpreter here in the Twin Cities. Kind of how I keep my skills sharp in the community, actively working and ran into a couple of my colleagues here. So that's a bit of my background. I've been interpreting for about 20 years and teaching for about 11.
Great, thank you. Yep, so we want to propose a new course in eighth grade for the American Sign Language. And I'll have Tyler talk a little bit about the rationale for the new course.
Um, I will, I'm going to read from what I wrote earlier. This course is designed for students with limited or no experience in ASL. Students will begin to understand sign ASL. Students will also become acquainted with American deaf culture. The rationale for adding this course to the middle school is this. Historically, there's been a high demand for this language to be offered. ASL locally and nationally is very, is a very accessible second language for all. The Twin Cities, we're lucky, has a very vibrant, active deaf community. It lends itself to interactions that are authentic with native users. There are also many exciting career pathways for students who have ASL skills with very high demand and low supply locally and nationally, which becomes more accessible for students to have a strong command of ASL as a second language. And by offering this to ASL students, they will have these opportunities and the ability to take up to five years of a second language with the possibility of earning college credit because we offer college and schools in our upper-level courses. Also, many other districts are offering this at the middle school level. And it's our opinion that this will help the district stay competitive with enrollment, both inside and outside the district.
Thank you. Questions regarding the course? Dr. Newmaster?
My first question is a general one about the number of electives kids can choose. And I know we've seen that grid, which is very complicated for middle school students. But when we look at eighth grade, let's just follow it down to that one. They have how many required class periods? And how many class periods can they put an elective in? That would be my first question, just to kind of give a grid.
Yep. Thanks, Dr. Newmaster. And I brought my handy course guide to help me with the, with these questions. So it does look different in each grade level. And, you know, all kids have an elective choice and just depending on which grade level they're in. And so if we talk about, oh, I have this nice chart here that I can even pass around, too. As we look at sixth grade, so we have the required courses. And then we have, so we have Language Arts, Math, Physical Science, and Minnesota History. And then they have PE and Music alternating. And then they have a literacy course, art, and then design and modeling. In seventh grade, very similar with the core courses, but they have PE, art, or music. And then they have the literacy and then the health course. And then in eighth grade, the same, you know, similar core courses. And then they have PE, art, or music. And then this is where they're able to choose either World Language or Facts, Manufacturing Ed, Automation and Robotics, or a Visual Media Art and Design E. And I'd be happy to pass this around, too, that gives this kind of a nice organized chart for you.
So basically, they have two class periods a day that can include or will include one of the many rich assortments of electives that they can choose from. Are most of the electives by semester?
Yes. Yep. So they really are trying, you know, with the scheduling piece, if it's every other day for a full year or a semester course, trying to get that. So, you know, they, they have that throughout the course of the year, or they have one semester and then the other.
I guess I have a background in world languages. So obviously, I think a language is a wonderfully elective. But I have two children who are professional musicians and went through a wonderful music training in White Bear. So how would, so somebody could take every other day band and the other day their language, extra language. And then they wouldn't be able to take art or literacy or Avid or any of the other choices, correct?
Well, it, I think it would be dependent on the student and the family and kind of them prioritizing. I, I do think because, you know, it's art or music to be able to meet that requirement for the standard, that's where maybe there's a little wiggle room where they would either take an art or a music and not both because they have PE that coincides with that.
Well, if you're doing music, I know from my kids, you need to do that all year regularly playing. And I wondered if they still in eighth grade offer a zero hour for dance?
Um, you know, I know they, I know they offer, you know, jazz practice and some enrichment pieces so that kids get that outside of their scheduled day. And it, it looks like we may have a parent, though, so that can speak to that.
Yeah. So I've got a sixth grader and an eighth grader right now. And my eighth grader is taking French and band. So those are, that was her choice. She doesn't like art. That's not her thing. And then she's taking jazz band on Wednesday mornings.
Okay, I remember the jazz band back at dawn driving.
Right. And so, yeah, so it was, she was able to take those two electives that she really wanted to take based on her experiences in sixth and seventh grade.
But we no longer have the powers to have choir and band and orchestra. You have to pick.
You do have to choose. Yep. So families have to make some hard decisions on prioritizing what's going to be best for their family.
And I think in the past, we had seven periods. I know we did at the high school. And you didn't have to make such
Sure.
hard decisions. And, and I guess my only other question is, and you've looked at it, the struggle to add enrichment in all kinds of paths, making these hard decisions, and you may end up with staff that only have two sections to teach. So the staffing is creative. So I'm wondering, I guess, the balance. As, as you're discussing that, when you look at you're adding new, it's just really hard because there's so many things in automotive and language and music and art that I've seen. So that was a conundrum, and you're kicking that around now. And you're just going to have to deal with staffing depending on what students enroll for. And I'm wondering, as you do that, this is my last question, I promise, and this is a question. You look at all these variables. What, what is the, I guess, decider when it comes to what's realistic? How many choices can be handled?
Yep.
And you may not have an answer for that.
Yeah, I, I think the, the big thing with offering the ASL in eighth grade, that would be, that is the only world language that we don't offer in eighth grade, where we do offer at the high school. So this will give more of a comprehensive experience for kids to be able to start ASL in eighth grade.
The second piece of that question I like is, when you look at all these things, are you offering a guide to sudden growth, which we've seen in the past, something may suddenly go like this, and then other choices can't be made? And sometimes, or are we going to say X amount here, X amount here, X amount here, and have some sort of a guide for how many sections of anything, I don't care what it is, all the electives? Is there a guide for that? Because we have, to have some kind of balance as we go from here to here.
Well, when, when we're determining staffing. So we, we look at trend data as well. So what students select and enroll in. We can also look at the percentage that maybe, for example, at the high school, maybe they change classes. And so we, we have trend data that we can do that in. So we know which classes would grow that kids would look at. We know, you know, what level of languages. For example, now all those languages in eighth grade, this is new where they count for the first year of a language in eighth grade. And so having ASL there, students will be able to receive high school credit for that first year of that language. And then looking at, okay, now with that, how many students are selecting ASL, too? And so we track all of that because it is a difficult decision. But it's really based on student interest and registration in elective classes. And then we can track over years when students aren't selecting classes, looking at it with department heads and talking about, is it a class that we no longer offer? Is there a way to rebrand it? Or what, what is the barrier so that's making sure we don't have too many classes? But we have a lot of data around what students are selecting.
Do we have data on the follow-up? If we're just looking at language from elementary, because we have Chinese and Spanish, how much of that follows through to them, to their eighth grade pick now? Because they have to wait a long time to check. That would be good data to collect if we don't have it. What do they choose?
Would be good to check. That's a new change for us, but we can absolutely look at it.
It would be good. Because how long did they have to wait before to pick up a language? Was it seventh grade?
Sixth and seventh grade it would be.
Yeah, so this will be the longest gap they can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lloyd, did you have a question? Ms. Ellison?
No. Dr. Gillespie answered my question. I wanted to know if it was another course, high school credit-bearing course. So, yeah, I think this is wonderful. I think it's good to have more options for languages, but also to teach kids how to do a cost-benefit analysis. You know, what, what is it that I want to learn and take with all the choices? So I, I love this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Floyd?
I lied. I actually thought of a question. Is ASL, is that considered for college, if you have a world language department, is that part, is that considered? Satisfies that requirement?
Yes, yes, it does. I'd say a vast majority and more are growing. I wouldn't say 100% of college, except as a part of language, but I would say most do.
All right. Dr. Arcan?
I just have a quick question. Knowing that the eighth grade schedule is full, but let's say I can't get it in my eighth grade, I can still take it in my next grade year as our first beginning class, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I don't really have a question, just a comment. I think this is wonderful. My daughter took ASL, but in high school because in middle school she had to take an extra math class in eighth grade. So then when she went to take French in ninth grade, she couldn't take it because there weren't enough kids at the level she needed to be at. So she went into ASL where I think if it had been offered in eighth grade, she would have taken it. And then it maybe would have followed her through better because when they're younger and they learn something like this, they tend to take it with them. And like you say, our community is, my neighbor is an ASL signer, and the need is very high. And every career you can go into needs ASL signers in the, in their industry. So I think this is great. So thank you.
You're welcome. I agree. It lends itself to any profession just to have this skill. And it's so functional, it's so applicable to anything you do, anything to do. Interpreting, social services, doctors, dentists, I mean, anybody can have the skills in their pocket. It's just such an asset to them.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nathanson, for being in the audience to support as well. Okay, our final new course proposal is AP 3D Studio Portfolio. And I'd like to invite Jen Latif, our art educator and curriculum lead, to talk through a little bit about the, the course proposal and the rationale. Jen, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Jen Latif. This is my seventh year here at White Bear, 14th year teaching. I taught in Anoka, Hennepin prior, and I've been in the high school for 13 years. Currently, we have, thank you. Currently, we have AP 2D and Drawing available to students right now. And it is a little bit confusing because if students aren't quite aware that there's three different portfolios that they could sign up for, they kind of get introduced this what, after they've already signed up and then started the course. So once they're in it, they're like, wait a second, there's an option for 3D. And we're starting to hear that more often, which is really exciting. And we've had to deny them in the past. So we really want to provide that opportunity to give kids a third level of study when it comes to three-dimensional work. And I really see this growing and pairing well with our fine arts pathway that we are in talks with White Bear Center for the Arts. And we've, we've discussed at length some really amazing opportunities with connecting to our community, industry, and having job shadowing or and having job shadowing or assisting artists and set up for, for any of their, lost the word, any like artwork showings and setting up gallery space. And they really wanted to have a select group of kids that would be really interested in this. We didn't want to open, open it up to like our drawing one students just because they might not continue on in that pathway. So having an AP course that we can access both 2D kids for drawing and painting as well as three dimensional, I think is going to lend really well. I also see that we can build some partnerships with our engineering students as well because a lot of 3D work, as I'm doing some research, integrate very easily with 3D printing and manufacturing.
Thank you. Questions? Dr. Arcan?
My first question, the only question is, are you able to offer the arts requirement in this course? Or they already have that by the time they get there? Because this would really fit with those new art requirements.
Absolutely. Yes, this is, this will suffice. But one of the prerequisites is that they have had at least one other 3D course leading into it to prepare them for that success. And of course, there will be that meeting.
Thank you. There, Ms. Ellison?
How does this work as an advanced placement course in getting college credit?
Yes.
I know how it works in AP English, but how does it work in this situation?
We are an anomaly with AP. We are the only course that start working on their final test on day one of the course. So the students are preparing a portfolio. There's three parts to the portfolio. There is the brief, which students explore a range of possibilities, a range of subject matters, materials. There's the concentration, which is more of a deep dive into a more succinct problem to solve. And it's through all sorts of avenues. It's looking at the research. It's developing designs and sketches as well as an end product. So it's really teaching that whole artistic thought process with the concentration. And then there's a quality piece, which can come from either of the other two sections, but it's looking more specifically at the quality of work and their craftsmanship. So traditionally in AP 2D, those pieces are actually physically mailed in. However, with 3D, that becomes very cumbersome. So it is something that would be done with high quality, high res photography to display that work as best as you can. So, yes, we start that process right away. We have them year round. So in, in the end, students are creating anywhere from eight to 15 different works of art dependent on their process. And so that's, that's an immense amount of work for a year's investigation. So, yeah, we start that right away, day one, and it's a continuing development. On the portfolio, on our like test day, we actually organize all of our digital files. And there's like some physical paperwork we have to submit with our images and like, like a kind of a, I verify that I am the only artist and I, this is my work authentically. And then that's, that's what we do on that actual test day.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Other questions? Just going to go ahead, Ms. Boyd?
So how excited are you about the connections between the White Bear Center for the Arts being?
Sorry, not half professional by any means, but yes, I, I, I can't even take it. Like, I am so excited to be physically near and we will just be able to like take a little walking field trip and go see a show being installed or going to an artist's talk. I'm going to be able to send kids over to have maybe more succinct professional guidance that maybe I can't always provide as much in the classroom during class time. I just, I can't, we've talked about collaboration pieces of like sculpture work on the pathway to and from. I mean, there's just so much. It's amazing.
I think it really opens up so many possibilities with them being so close and as successful as they are. So I, I'm really excited about that to see how the corridor is going to look over the next few years.
And Hannah Field right next door too. So it's going to be amazing.
Other questions, comments? I just want to thank you very much for your work in this space. I'm, I know that my, I wish that we had this a couple of years ago. My 2020 graduate would have loved this, so.
I know. I'll still teach her.
I really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
All right, thank you.
Great. Any further questions for me?
Any other? Thank you very much. Josh, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So actually, I do, I, just so next steps, this will come before us for the, at the next school board meeting to make sure we approve. And if anybody has any questions between now and then, please email you and we can move that thing through. All right?
And I just want to say a special thank you again to all the educator colleagues that came up tonight to really just show their enthusiasm and passion for what they do for kids. So I think it was a great addition to this presentation.
Thank you all very much. Really appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, with that, we will now move on to our next discussion item, B2, which is the High School Programming Career Pathways Update. Dr. Valeski, is this you also?
Chair Mullen, members of the board, I'm super excited to introduce the great Jenny Moore to you to share more about our career pathways and give an update about our health and wellness pathway along with an overview of all the work that's been going on in that area. So Jenny, can you quick slide for you?
Oh, hey. Hello, Chair Mullen, members of the board, student representatives, Dr. Kay, hello, hello. My name is Jenny Moore. I'm the Career Pathways Coordinator. I know that, I think we've all met, but everyone in the audience, my name is Jenny. And yeah, so I'm going to do a highlight of health and wellness, but I will not leave out our other friendly career pathways that we love. So just get excited because there's lots of really great things that are happening. Okay, go ahead to the next one. All right, so what's really important for everyone to know is what has changed systematically for career pathways in order to understand and appreciate the things that are happening within the career pathway? So if you take a look up at this, the graphic, what you can see is we've mirrored what the district 624 does for the multi-tiered support system. So very much like the MTSS, that is what we're doing in our career pathways program. When you take a look at the bottom level there, we have all high school students, all of our high school students have an assigned school counselor. They all receive some level of college and career support with their counselor or in other courses. If you take that next level up then in career pathways, you can take career pathway courses. What Derek Duscher talked about, all of the classes he teaches, they're all the automotive career pathway courses. That's one example. And during these courses, when students are in these classes, they're really learning and exploring. So all the students, their names are taken off the roster, their names are added to careerpathways@isd624.ee or email list, and we allow them to make that decision. They're learning and exploring. We know that some students are just taking the class for a variety of reasons. It may be fun, their friend may be taking it, they may love the teacher, there's so many reasons. But what we wanted to do in career pathways was to differentiate between the student who is taking intro to healthcare careers because they think it's interesting and also the student who really knows for sure they want to pursue healthcare, for example, as a career. Brand new this year, we invited students to register for career pathways, which means that students can now voluntarily register for one of our seven pathways. And for those in the room that don't know, we have automotive, business, construction skilled trades, education, engineering, manufacturing, IT, and health and wellness. The reason why we have these seven pathways right now is not only because, well, first off, it's the highest demand workforce area in the Northeast metro statewide and nationwide as well. So we know that we are serving our students by making informed decisions about their career choice and appropriately matching their post-secondary plans based on career choice. We're also serving our faculty and staff by being an additional resource to the classroom. And we're also working with our local industry partners by creating and aligning our educational opportunities based on the unique workforce needs of the Northeast metro. So when students register then, the career pathway actually shows up in their school schedule. And to be very clear, it does not interfere with a course or elective course. There's no attendance, there's no homework. Rather, it's a signal to the student support team, family, parent guardians, myself, assigned school counselor to say, you know, my name is Allison and I want to take the next step in my career. Students who register get first dibs on everything from career coaching, as little or as much as they want, in addition to their assigned school counselor, job site tours, job shadows, paid internships, scholarships, alumni support, and the list goes on. So that's really important for everyone to understand how that works. Because then in healthcare, so if you think about those current courses, career path courses, we offer intro to healthcare careers and it does have a concurrent enrollment component to it. Kinesiology, biomedical engineering, anatomy and physiology, certified nursing assistant, which also is for concurrent enrollment and has industry recognized credentials. And then students can also take the 916 CTE courses, which includes dental, EMT, and other medical careers. Big thank you to Dustin Holman, Erica Largent, Katie Marsh, and Shannon Rebo who teach all those courses. And Erica Largent is our brand new CNA instructor and also full-time licensed school nurse at South Campus, which is a huge benefit to our students because now we have a full-time RN actually at South Campus all day. Incredible. And I'm really excited to see the more and more students become certified because the nurse is there. Also, something that's really exciting then in the health and wellness career pathway is that we were the first high school in the state of Minnesota last year to offer what's called the Youth Mental Health First Aid Certification. So everyone in this room has had some opportunity at some point to get first aid or CPR certified. Think of that as the mental health component to first aid. Any student who is 18 years old and who wants to pursue a career in health and wellness, human services and/or education can now get certified free of charge, thanks to Greater Twin Cities United Way funding. Last spring, we had 28 18-year-old students become certified and we actually got 20 of our staff members certified as well. Katie Marsh and Shannon Rebo are now nationally certified youth mental health first aid certifiers or instructors in our district, which is super exciting because we're actually trying to be creative and thinking about how we could potentially offer this to our community members as well, partner with Tim and his team in community ed and see how, how we could actually make this as a course to any community member. We also were the changemaker spotlight of the year for Great Greater Twin Cities United Way based on the work that we have done with that. But there's more. So just in health and wellness alone, even amidst this crazy pandemic summer, we still had 12 students complete Scrubs Camp and we even opened a HOSA chapter. So for those that haven't heard of HOSA before, it was, used to stand for Health Occupation Student Association. It's now Future Health Professionals. It's a huge deal for anyone that wants to go into healthcare. And we opened up a chapter just this year already. Even in the middle of October, we already got that going. We have a fall leadership conference coming up. And I'd like to do thank you to Erica Largent, who not only is the new CNA instructor and the licensed school nurse, but she also said yes to being the lead advisor and then Kushy Bakhter, a senior, who basically led the, the organization movement. Looking to the future, we are officially having our first audit with Minnesota Department of Health, November 4th for a CNA. Big deal. We also are eligible to start thinking about whether or not we want to do teen mental health first aid. We are qualified because we are a youth mental health first aid site. We could potentially see if, we're going to go down that rabbit hole this year with the team and decide whether or not it's going to work best for our classes. But students, all high school students could get a teen mental health first aid certification, which really the point of it is like, if you have a friend or a family member that is in a mental health crisis, it helps you intervene appropriately and helps that person get the support that they need. Helps them remind themselves they're not a licensed professional. It's really getting the support that the students or the staff members need. Job shadows are starting as well. So I'll pause there. That's, so that's just health and wellness. We have six other pathways. This is how fun life is. And so if, do you have any questions or might you have any questions about the health and wellness career pathway?
Ms. Ellison?
First of all, I am so proud and excited that this youth mental health first aid is happening. I think it couldn't have come at a better time. So thank you for that. My question is, what's the difference between youth mental health first aid and teen mental health first aid?
Great question. So youth mental health first aid is for people who have to be 18 years old to be certified. And when you get the certification, it appropriately certifies you to intervene with youth ages 13 through 18. In contrast, the teen mental health first aid is for any high school student to get like sprinkles of it, right? So it's like you're, you could be a teenager, grades nine through 12, and get the certification. So a little bit, not as intense, but really kind of gives an overview of the foundation to help them understand what the mental health world is all about.
Which is brilliant because then that's just scaffolding skills for students to be able to look out for one another. I love the idea of having this available to the white bear community.
Yes, and the nice thing about it is that we wouldn't have to create a new course. It could be implemented in other coursework as well. And sometimes we know that it can be a challenge to continue adding courses. So it could be added within the required health course. So we're, we're kind of playing around with that and seeing what that would look like.
Ms. Dammelson?
I just, everything she said, and with all of the things that are happening in society right now and mental health is currently starting, it's a pandemic of its own. So these are great resources and I would really like to see us look into implementing that teen mental health. Because if kids can even have just, like you say, a sprinkling of knowledge on how to see a sign or to be able to go, you know, something doesn't seem right here. What can I do? Or how can I help? I mean, that could save a life, but could save many lives. And I think that's wonderful. This is, that's fan call of it. Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you, teachers. Thank you, Katie and Shannon, for sure.
Thank you, everybody involved.
Other questions or comments? Okay.
Okay. So now we're going to do a quick glance at all the career pathways. So when you think about that top level today, well, today we have 105 students who have registered for the health and wellness career pathway. Today, we have 333 students who have registered for one of the seven pathways. Voluntarily said, I want to take that next step, which is really exciting. So it's kind of like I have a caseload of 330 students now in grades 10 through 12. So the icons at the bottom there, we just use them for kind of fun. But the left, moving from left to right, on the left is automotive, automotive career pathway. I will say this forever. I, it is just flourishing because of teachers like Derek Duscher. Like, it's amazing. And so we, we received a youth skills training grant. For those that don't know, the youth skills training grant is a grant through Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry to provide paid experiential learning for students outside of the classroom, connecting it to what they're learning in the classroom. And so we did receive round one years ago for CNA, and this is why we have a sustainable class. But we received round four. So we received $100,000 grant for training tomorrow's technicians. And Derek and I are working together. The idea is that any of our 33 registered automotive career pathway students will be guaranteed a job shadow of up to 40 hours at a variety of local industry partners. And then afterwards, they will, based on their performance, employers can offer part or full-time employment to our students. We've already seen, I think, 12 students have already been employed from the beginning of the school year in six weeks. So it's incredible, especially again for our employers.
But that, that's not after graduation. That's if you took that as a junior, you're doing that your junior year and.
Yes. Yeah, so now our students, yes, thank you for asking that, or just commenting on that because youth skills training can provide for students who are 16 years old and older, so they do not have to be 18 and graduated. This is specifically for students who are 16, 17, 16 and 17 as well, which addresses a major workforce shortage issue in transportation, but also in our, like manufacturing and engineering is another example. Then the next one there is our business career pathway. And we are super excited to offer in our business career pathway, employability skills workshops for the first time. Actually, students are asking for that when you, when you, when you ask employers what they're wanting, they would say soft skills. Which side note, we don't say soft skills anymore because that's not cool to Denzy. It's employability skills. And so don't say soft skills anymore. It's too subtle. So it's employability skills. And we're actually doing two workshops on Wednesday and Friday. We are partnering with White Bear Area Chamber of Commerce and their Business Education Network, which we were acknowledged and kind of noted about the work that we've been doing with the Minnesota State Chamber. And so we're going to just offer these awesome workshops. Lunch is free. It's on, it's on the chamber. And we're bringing in local industry partners. And they're going to talk about resumes and nail in the interview. And my favorite is going to, we're going to talk about your digital first impression. So I'd like to think we could all bring up our Google. So I'd like to think we could all bring up our Google little picture and see what that looks like for the students, but we'll do something fun like that. So we'll offer that in the fall and the spring. Okay, so the next one, I am like to the moon and back excited. We had talked about this, world's best workforce. We want to ensure that when, it's our responsibility as public educators to ensure that when students graduate, they have to be college and career ready. But if you are a student who is pursuing a career in the trades, automotive, manufacturing, and any construction skilled trade and you don't have your driver's license, you are not career ready. And it costs $400 to get your driver's permit. So there's a huge disconnect there. And as a result, Dan Rossiter, our construction career pathway teacher, became an A-plus driving school instructor this past summer. And we are the first high school in the state of Minnesota to be offering a driver's license program for skilled trades. Students committed to the skilled trades after high school. It starts November 8th. We partnered with Construction Careers Foundation, White Bear Lake Area Schools Community Ed, A-plus Driving School in Dan. And we are paying for up to 20 students to get their driver's license in like three weeks. It's so exciting. So that, I mean, it just, now they can go to work and they all, they want to work. So it's really exciting. Education, we also partnered with community ed and we are super excited because we're trying to be really innovative about this huge workforce demand that the school district is facing. I mean, there's lots of issues right now. We, it's hard to hire people. And so we worked, I met with someone from community ed today and we're creating an internship for non-student days. So students who would like to pursue a career in education or anything related to children in general, human services, the list goes on. We start in January 2022 until the end of the school year will look to, to hire paid interns for the non-student days. So like when you both don't have to work or you don't have to go to school, like you could potentially go and you could work in this paid internship on a non-student day and go be with elementary kids who need to also have childcare. So we're gonna do that. And then of course, with the additional bonus benefit of being offered employment after the internship is over. It's just an innovative way. We're just trying to be creative about how to address the workforce shortage and then also to help our students make those informed decisions. And finally, IT is ready to take the next step. We have a great teacher, Halat Basir, is ready to rock and roll. So we're ready to take the next step in that and kind of see what that looks like. And then our internships are evolving in manufacturing and engineering. We are featured in Teaching Today Minnesota in the next month's article. And what we're finding is that internships are actually lasting longer and longer. Our employers are like, we want more, we want more students. So rather than doing three, four week internships, we're actually creating ones that are essentially a full-time job in the summer with the additional benefit of getting hired. And some of them are able to hire 16 and 17-year-olds as well, based on being a youth skills training program. So it's really exciting and the, sorry, no. The last thing, I just, I have to thank these people. They came to our employer engagement webinar in August. All of these companies here, they donate money. They're called Bear Fried Sponsors. And these people donate anything from $25 to like $250. It's, it's, it's small from a big company standpoint, but for a student who maybe can't afford like a gas card or can't afford their CNA test or like whatever you can think of, even just a lunch and learn, it makes a huge difference. So companies like this are continuing to back us on the work that we're doing and just really exciting stuff. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Questions, comments? Dr. Arcan?
My question is, and I don't know if you nerd out like I do, but I know that you saw the Erin Olson report from Real Time Talent and I went through it heavily. I think that's something that maybe you could bring this forward because it really not only gives us some great information, but it really shows what we're doing through the data in there and how necessary this is and how much we're meeting the needs not only of our community, but of the Seven County Metro area. So my thought would be if you could bring that forward for the rest of them so they could go through it and see it. I think it's interesting information.
Oh, yes. So yes, I nerd out as well. And for those that don't know, Real Time Talent is an organization that literally just focuses on research behind workforce trends in the greater Minnesota area and the Seven County Metro area. And it is so fascinating, the trends, what, what's related to the pandemic, like what's, I mean, it's just, it's really, it's really interesting. And of course, fortunately, the seven pathways that we have are represented within Real Time Talent. So it proves and validates that what we're offering to our students really does have purpose after high school.
Thank you. Other question? Ms. Thompson?
I would just like to say thank you to you, Jenny, for all of your, the excitement that you bring. You can tell you really love your job. And so obviously, everybody who's involved, I would thank everybody involved. But I think having a leader in the team who has so much excitement for what they do, it shows in everything that you're bringing to our district. And these are fantastic assets for our students to have access to. So thank you so much for taking pride in your job.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
There was a hint earlier in the meeting about a potential fine arts pathway. So are there other pathways in the works?
Yes.
Can you tell?
Well, people in this room, I mean, David and Tyler have mentioned they're, they're really eager. I know David is really eager to talk about ASL as a pathway. Yes, Jen Latif and her team, we've met with Wiper Center of Arts. We are playing with like a senior leadership port, like kind of a capstone, helping support them. So yes, we always fall back on, when you look at the Minnesota Department of Ed's career wheel, everything that we are teaching here for sure, really most certainly fits in that career wheel, which is really exciting. That's what I get most excited about, that if any elected teacher comes to me, which a lot of, like most departments are jumping on board because they know that art, for example, language, for example, there are careers within there. And so it's easy for us to articulate that because it's already being done and you can see how that connects to the career wheel. So yes, I think we, I think we're just ready to kind of think about what does the future of learning look like.
So we're super excited with the new high school. There's lots of opportunities. So really it is figuring out backwards planning from when we open in fall of 2024 and engaging our department leaders. But really, when we think of career pathways, it is making sure that we have opportunities for concurrent enrollment, what industry credentials there are. And it, you know, that flexes depending on what area you're looking at. But we want to really show students that where their interests are, there's lots of different opportunities for that next step, whether that's post-secondary schooling, going straight to work. And so we are super excited. Jenny's looking at me because I'm the one who slowed them down a little bit. But we are pretty quick to move and it, you'll be, if you think this is exciting, wait, what's in the background? Yeah, people are really excited about it. And the new school just opens up so many opportunities with facilities that will enhance our work even more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Thank you guys very much. We really appreciate it. Thanks. We'll now move to our only operational item, which is C1, which is action on the bids for the Otter Lake Elementary Addition and Expansion. Ms. Wall?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. At our September 27th work session, we provided an update on facilities projects and the three projects that were coming up for bid this fall, Birch Lake, Lake Ayers, of which we've already opened the bids and they were approved at our last meeting. But also Otter Lake, which we opened the bids on October 19th. We had great, a great number of companies that were competing for those work scopes. 128 companies bid for 28 work scopes. So we were pretty excited. There was a lot of competition. The bids came in just slightly under budget at $7,652,203. And so we're recommending that the board approve the Otter Lake renovations and additions to the contractors listed in the tactic totaling $7,652,203.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wall. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve the recommended action? There's been a motion by Dr. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Is there any discussion regarding the, the recommendation?
Do you have one question, sir?
Dr. Arcan?
When you, how, how did this bid come out to what you were budgeting? Was it over or under about right?
Just, just under $284,413 under.
Okay, thank you.
So we went into those bids thinking we might be slightly over and we ended up slightly under. So our team with Wald Architects and Engineers and our lead architect for all of our projects, Paul Nafawski is here tonight too. But the team from Wald and Carl Sanderson do have, done a really terrific job of estimating these projects. And in this case, we came in a little under.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Does the scope of this run into anything with 916? Because I know they have the one section of, of R. So does any of the scope of this run into that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So Otter Lake, a portion of the building about when it was built, 916 owns a portion of that building. They don't use it currently. And actually, we do some programming in that space. So the facilities upgrades that we're doing aren't, but we're not upgrading the, the part that's owned by 916. The renovations aren't, they don't cover the entire building, right? So the portions of the building that will be renovated are of course all portions we own, but we're not investing in their property.
There's a hope that someday we'll take ownership of that portion of the building. We're, we're having conversations about that.
Is this not like a flip flop to be done because we've got, we have part of?
Yeah, it's, there's some, it's complicated. We're working, we're working on it.
Thank you.
Our, our dream is that we'll own it, own it all. And that'll happen at some point. It'll take some time. And then we'll need to probably use long-term facility maintenance funding to upgrade that space. We'll do that when we have the chance.
All of the member schools own their part of it, I guess, if you look at that way. So it does get really complicated when you start, who's gonna take ownership of something that 916 owns.
I just wondered, I couldn't remember from the scope, if it touched in any of those areas, how that is gonna work. That answers that. Thank you.
So when we need improvements to those, just as 916's at Bel Air, when there's enhancements that need to be made, we work together, the two districts are trying to figure out what needs to get done and who's gonna pay for it.
We own that building from us.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call broken.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
DuRusker?
Aye.
And the motion passed. Thank you very much. We are now at the portion of our meeting for adjournment. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair Mullen, I go for adjournment.
We've got a, a motion by Dr. Arcan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Boyd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it and we are adjourned. Thank you.